Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 19th, 2019 meeting of the White House City Council. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. And I also, I do want to mention our condolences to the great family for the passing of Coach Greg. And so we'll have an extra moment or two of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Here.
Cantor.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Morrison.
Mayor.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Almore.
Present.
President.
Present. Next on our agenda, we have our approval of minutes for March 5, 2019, agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to approve the March 5 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Connison, a second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the March 5, 2019 minutes. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Connison.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Almore.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we will have a special presentation. I'm going to ask Joe Ryan to introduce it and tell us what it's all about, and then introduce those, everyone who's involved in the presentation.
Well, Greg, Council, thank you for allowing me to introduce the project. I will be brief, because we do have a special presentation tonight. We have OHM Advisors here, who has been working for a year on our development blueprint, as we're calling it. And I'll just keep in mind that we have different community stakeholders working on this, residents, also businesses, other stakeholders. And I also ask you to keep in mind that these thoughts, ideas are being put forward. This is not for today or next week, this is for the future, long-term. So you may have questions, but I just ask that you keep an open mind as you're viewing these ideas. So without further ado, I'll turn it over.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good.
Joe, if you're ready, can I move this up here?
Yeah, sure.
And move this whole device up here?
It's pretty ready to be charged up.
Oh, okay. My name's Aaron Dotman, I'm a principal with OHM, here to present the final plan to you tonight. And Alyssa Sexton is a planner with OHM as well. And we're going to kind of both go through this slideshow with you and let you know what we've been up to for the last several months and what you have to look forward to as you continue to look and use this document. So it's hard to pack in seven to 12 months in three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yeah. Plus 15 seconds. But we did our best. There's a lot in here that you may have questions about, or you may not see everything in here. So we encourage you to go look at the final draft online. It provides your confidence, there's a lot of good content. This is really intended to be a pretty high-level overview of what we went up to. So this is the agenda for how we'll go through things with you tonight of introduction. We'll talk about the engagement that we did, some existing condition work. Then we'll get into the blueprint of the plan and finally talk about what's happening with the implementation of the plan. So one of the things that, as Joe kind of said, to keep in mind, this is visionary document. This isn't two, three, five years out, this is a 10- to 20-year document. It's really intended to be that core blueprint for how you guys are going to make informed decisions as a community on a variety of fronts. There are a lot of communities right now that are going through this process. Two of your neighbors just went through this process to update their plans. And it really gives you clear direction on how to make informed decisions. One thing important to remember with the comprehensive plan is it is fore-looking, but it's a guide, it is a flexible document. It's not a codified document like your zoning code or something technical like that. It's intended to be general by nature. It covers a range of elements that make up who you are and how you function as a community. And Ohio municipalities have the power to create this document. And so it's not required, but it's highly advised. And there's been a lot of case studies where the plan has come into play and certain decisions have been made at the local level. So it is an important document to have as a platform to make defensible decisions. It's not your zoning code, although the final plan will have a set of recommendations for what we believe we should do to bring your code in alignment with the plan. But it is not the zoning code. So when you see colors on a map and you see things in here, it doesn't mean anything's technically changing. It's really setting the expectation for how there should change in the future. It's always the first thing everybody does when they come to this meeting is they go straight to their house, right in their block, and they look at the color. But, you know, there will be different colors, and things do look different. Because when you think 10 to 20 years out, we hope that things do look different at work. If you look 10, 20 years back, they look different then. So it's visionary. It brings that unified vision, long-term. One of the things that I think is really important here is that it can help inform and align with your capital improvements, and it really should. This document, in addition to that, really sets the expectations for how the city's investments can be made and leveraged and put into alignment with private sector investment. And when those two things combine, great change can happen. So it really should be looked at and consulted with as you do your capital planning, as a good guide and platform to make those decisions. It can help identify valuable resources in your community, places that you want to preserve. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the goal of the document is really to improve the quality of life. This is how we went through the process with this plan. There were six phases, we're sitting there between five and six right now. Some of you may have been on the journey with us at some of the meetings or some of the things that we've been doing. But it's been a good process. We did some preparation, spent some time understanding the context. Where have you been and where are you today? Important to understand those pieces. We did some listening. At the end of the day, our job is just to be the facilitator and the wagon master. We don't live here, we don't work here. Our job is to be in the process. And for us to be informed, we have to listen. So that was a big part of what we did. Ultimately, those two phases, two and three, were putting the ingredients on the table to bake the cake, which happened in phase four, when the plan came together. We reveal and test the plan, and ultimately finalize. So these are all the fund dates that have occurred as part of this process. You'll note that up there, you see a lot of steering committee. So we did have a rather large steering committee for this project made up of people within the community, local stakeholders, folks that your staff felt would be good to have involved to help us put this project together. And so every step of the way, they're checking us, they're saying yes, they're blessing what we're doing, and we're just presenting things to them. So they've been a good sounding board along the way. In terms of roles, you'll see a bunch of different names and titles and folks up there. Obviously, we talked about the steering committee. It is important that after the plan and through adoption, we did ask them to come to you when this actually goes to adoption, to basically represent the work that they did, and they should be part of that. The public and the community providing insight and telling us what their priorities are. We talked to stakeholders, smaller groups, which we'll talk about here in a second. Planning Commission ultimately is going to be one of the caretakers of the document. And then, of course, you guys, the elected officials, will also be one of the caretakers and lead towards implementation. So in terms of how the plan came together, there were a number of plan inputs that went into this. I'm going to let Alyssa talk about some of this in terms of what we did. But we had public input, we talked to stakeholders, we did our existing conditions. We also considered best practices.
Thanks. So for the public engagement, we had a number of events, and this is an overview here. We came to your guys' National Night Out and got rained out. So about a month later, we attended the September Social to try to get some engagement from the community. We had three stakeholder interviews, and that included businesses, nonprofits, the healthcare industry. And then now we're here revealing the draft plan. And throughout the process, we had project updates on the website and engagement opportunities on there. So for the stakeholder meetings, again, we had three stakeholder meetings, including businesses, banks, nonprofits, and the healthcare industry. Generally, the stakeholders felt that White Hall was a very business-friendly community and is going in a positive direction, so that's great. They did felt that there were some things that could improve the quality of life for residents, and that will be admitted in our existing conditions later. When asked about opportunities and challenges, this is a general overview. They felt that the location was great, access to I-270 in the airport, attractive businesses and local support, the park system, and again, just that positive community. So really strong things going on in White Hall. As far as challenges, lack of diverse housing options. And so this was in reference to price, type, and style. And they also felt that there was need for more school service restaurants as opposed to a quick-grabbing grill place. They felt that the city could use more walkable environments, that would be an attractive thing to future residents in the city. Access to medical care was a concern, and again, mobility options for the rural population, so seniors, single moms, and children. One activity we did with the steering committee that was really enlightening was we asked them for places in White Hall that should be preserved, enhanced, or transformed. So as far as preserve, the steering committee felt that those community gathering places, the parks, the schools, the libraries, were really great and strong assets for the community, and we should maintain those as is. Places to enhance tended to be along the corridors as well as some of the aging housing stocks. So these would be places that maybe we don't need to completely rethink, but they could use some improvements. And then finally, transform. These are again, along the major corridors, at Hamilton and Main and along Broad. And this really played into some other elements that you'll see later on in the plan, specifically the focus areas. So again, just a general overview, preservation near civic uses, enhancing some of those commercial areas, and transforming the major corridors. And then Aaron is going to talk about trends going on.
So very timely that you as a community are going through this process, because there's a lot happening there locally. One of the things that Art's firm also was able to work on with Morpse was the Insight 2050 project. And it really was dealing with this number up here, which is what are we, as a region, going to do with a million people coming in 2050? So that was a big part of what we had to consider as well as everything going on here. So regional trends, one of the things we think about and we presented to the steering committee along the way is really thinking about household structure. And so one of the statistics here is between 2010 to 2030, the number of households without children only up to 87% of the growth in households in Columbus, Oklahoma. So that's significant. So what we used to think of as the traditional household isn't what's growing today. So how do we adapt and plan for those changes coming forward? In addition to that, we have the aging population. These are two statistics you probably are very familiar with. 56% of the growth in the number of houses in Columbus, coming of that million, will come from senior households. So those are two very non-traditional households as we typically knew them in the past, that we planned for. One of the other key things that we continue to think about, talk about a lot of the work that we're doing, is where do people want to be? What's attracting them, what kind of environment do they want to be in? Travel around Central Ohio, these probably resonate with you as well. More than 50% of Ohioans really want to live in someplace that's walkable, livable, has a variety of things going on. What your community set up, you actually are positioned well to capitalize on some of that, because of your street grid, some of the density you have going on. So how do we elevate that, build on that, to create the environments that people are looking for, where they want to live? One of the other key things is what type of housing, what are they looking for in terms of a housing type? 72% of households are without children, 55% from 1970. 45% of the national population from millennial and boom generation. So I covered that a little bit. But what does that all mean? They're looking for different housing structures. So the table on the right kind of illustrates what happens across those age demographics with 18 and 29 and up to 60 of their housing preference. So going from smaller lots to larger lots, what happens is there's convergence. And their desire for that smaller lot, smaller house, that's more manageable, more flexible, across the board. And where those two demographics meet, that's really where we're seeing that demand.
So now I'm going to cover some of the existing conditions work that we did. And this is sort of a higher-level key stats, not all of the existing condition work that is included in the plan. So you're a population of just over 18,000, that's somewhat declined since 2000. Your median age at 33 is comparable to the county, but a little bit younger than some of your neighbors. And as far as your age distribution, you're comparable to the county again, but are kind of missing that 20s millennial age population. White Hall is very diverse. So 14% of your population is Hispanic or Latino, and 19% speak a language other than English at home. So this is different from your neighbors, and really sets you apart as being unique. As far as education, White Hall does lag a little bit behind in education. Higher levels of no high school and high school attainment, and lower levels of some college and bachelor. As far as housing type, White Hall has a diverse housing stock compared to nearby communities. And as Aaron noted before, this is, looking at your housing type is very important because we see that those trends are changing, and people are not necessarily wanting a large lot, single-family home, and you guys do have some variety in your housing type. However, White Hall's housing stock is older and a lower value in comparison to nearby communities. So you had that boom in the 50s, and so your housing stock may need a little bit of attention, some rehab, or maybe even some new housing stock within the city. As far as employment goes, you have a somewhat higher employment rate compared to the county and nearby cities, and your median household income is relatively lower. As far as workers who live within White Hall and work within White Hall, that makes up a smaller percentage of the population compared to your neighbors. So many people are commuting outside the city for work. So there may be an opportunity to attract some of those employees to either live here or to live and work here. One of the stats from the plan is that increasing the share of workers who live and work in White Hall by just 1.5 percentage points would account for 200 additional residential households. So by attracting some of those people to live and work in the city, you could experience a great boom. White Hall also has a lot of retail, which is probably not surprising when you drag down your main streets. You have 88 square feet per person, and the U.S. average is just 24. And you can see that's really reflected in your employment numbers, with public administration being your top employment sector, and retail, which would support that, being just behind that. So as a summary, White Hall is very racially and economically diverse in Central Ohio. And this is something that really makes you unique and stands out. The majority of residents do not work in White Hall despite a lower rate of car ownership. So just 15% of White Hall residents, or 15% of White Hall residents do not own a car. So this is important, they really need to be able to access those jobs nearby. Your housing stock is diverse, but it's aging, and the military-related jobs and the by-product service jobs, like those retail jobs, fuel the local economy. So in addition to having an abundance of retail, existing retail lacks the quality and the format currently desired within the market. Here's your existing zoning. So again, you'll see commercial along those major corridors, office uses, and industrial uses towards the north, and then sort of residential in between. And this is also reflected in your existing land use. Commercial uses along the corridors, office industrial to the north, residential in between.
So a couple of key things there. The reason we go through that exercise, which took there about seven minutes, actually doing all that with our committee took a lot of time, but it's, is to set the stage and to fill up the cup with the information from which we can start to craft the plan. So we're not doing it from a place of lack of knowledge. Two things really jumped out at us when we went through this exercise. And we've done this for communities around you, and there's a couple of things that make you really unique. One is the amount of retail you have. When you compare this to your neighbors, in the national statistic, right, which we showed you there, you have an abundance of retail. Now you couple that with the changing retail market. My guess is if I took a poll up here today and I asked you how many of you bought more than 50% of your Christmas gifts online this year, probably almost all of you raised your hand. They go, I bought a couple in store. You know, in less than 15 years, more than 50% of all of our retail is going to be obsolete because the way we do business is changing. And that's going to impact you guys considerably. So it's one of the things we had to think about as part of this, is how are we going to deal with that? The other one was related to the housing. There are a couple of things that are critical with that, right? So what is, oh, you look at your housing spectrum, right, the cool color chart, our chart there, oh, we have a diverse population. We've done, we have all this available, we've done our share, we're ready, we're positioned to be of our needs. The challenge is that was, on average, built in the 1960s. It was not economically competitive, we know what those houses, what those units look like. Small, tiny closets, small, tiny bathrooms, lots of walls. Nothing of what everybody's actually looking for in the market today. So the strategy could be, well, let's just fix that up, we already have it, we were doing our work. Or let's build more of the same in a new fashion to force some of those other people, I shouldn't say people, units to compete, right? The best example of that that we've seen locally, I'm sure you all can recognize this, is what happened in Ohio State, South Campus Gateway. Before that happened, there were a handful of landlords and property owners who controlled 75% of that entire space. Well, because they can control it, there's only so much competition going on. So you can maintain it to a certain level. What happened was Ohio State got in the games that they were going to change this. So they started acquiring property building and actually forced to change that market. So it was flooding the market with new opportunities and new units that actually changed that entire market condition. So sometimes that's counterintuitive in the work that we do. People say, well, I don't want to build more, because look at those apartments, if those units are bad, I don't want any more of that, so I can get new applications for something new. And we say, no. I would challenge you, and this plan is going to challenge you, to think a little bit differently and think about how you're actually going to solve that problem. And part of what we're going to talk about moving forward is what we're going to do about it, and in particular, a couple of areas that are positioned well to do that. The plan is kind of set up like this. You have these five different sections. The meat of the documents, section three and four and five. So three is the future land use map, that's the map everybody usually will look at the most. Four are a series of focus areas that have a little bit more emphasis and detail into them, actually a lot. And then five is implementation, the goals, the actions, strategies, how you're going to get this all done. So from a hierarchy, you have a series of goals, which I'll show you in a second. Supporting those goals, you have objectives and actions. So the objectives being strategies to achieve the goals, and the actions are the project programs or policies that will actually specifically help you get them done. So when we put all of that information, and there's a lot more in your plan than what we just presented to you in the mixing pot, and we challenged our steering committee and the staff and our team to come up with a series of high-level goals, this is what's driving the plan. There's seven goals here. One is to promote the commercial and residential growth along the major corridors, which we saw earlier. Preserve and enhance your existing neighborhoods. There are, you know, one of the comments I was having a conversation with Joe here before the meeting, there's a lot of interesting architecture here. And this building in particular, I'm sure it's a very divisive style of architecture, but that mid-20th century modern is actually pretty cool. And so the more you can embrace some of the things that you have in these neighborhoods and some of them along the corridors, I think that's a positive. Stimulate development of the community's local economic base, of course, why wouldn't that not be in there? Create a robust and connected park system and networks, or that walkability factor. Parks being livable, adding quality of life, being the attractors of the private sector because those are the amenities they want to be around. And provide access to healthcare and public services. Continue to develop and promote your image and brand, which you guys have been doing a great job of, by the way. And then utilize reasonable proximity to further White Hall's progress. So those are the high-level goals that drove us forward. In terms of the future land use map, it looks a little bit different than what you're seeing. It's simplified, there's fewer districts. And these are the future land use types that should be applied to these areas. So what that means is if you're getting a rezoning, or there's a development change, the first place you should land is with this map, is in alignment with our map that we've said we want to see at that location. The second place you will go is the zoning code. With the map, there's a lot of detail, and we could spend a lot, actually, we had a lot of slides of this, and we pulled them all out, because I would encourage you to look at this on your own rather than listen to us here in this format tonight. But there's a lot of good detail in there about each land use type, what the intensity should be in that area, what are the preferred uses in that area, what's the character. And so, you know, this map, while it just looks like colors, there's actually a lot of supporting detail that goes with it. So what does a professional office district mean? And that's all in the plan, too. This table is a very simplified version of what you'll actually find in the document that describes those different land use types. One of the most fun areas that we got are the focus areas. So these are areas that we identified, both on what the steering committee pointed out to us, working with staff, and we said, where is the real opportunity? Where could some transformative things happen? And then how should the plan respond? And so they get another layer of detail and other analysis that's part of it. One of the things that we did, that we didn't put that data in here, that was important to Zach and Joe, was we did have a market analyst on the team. And so we did do some market assessment and look at, really, what is the potential here? What's the gap, and what should we determine that we think the market can support? So that also drove a lot of the recommendations you'll see in here, and you can review that in the document. So the first one was Woodcliff, this should be very familiar to you. I know you guys have been working on this for some time. Each one of these focus areas has a set of development goals. So ones at Woodcliff are listed there. And this was, and I think our opinion, was the catalyst area. One, you've done a great job trying to acquire property, control it, and that makes a lot of things easier moving forward, especially facilitating redevelopment. But also, this proximity of I-270, its potential as this gateway into your community, a lot of good things happening here. And so what you'll see as you look at the plan for this, is a lot of the stuff that we talked about early on in terms of regional trends, maybe what your opportunities could be, we just had the conversation on your housing, how we deal with that, transit. All of those things start to get baked into some of these concepts. So this one in particular, thank you, Joe, for the pointer, which I'm going to use now, is really hinted around a high degree of mixed abuses. That's anchored by some green space, that's all connects to the entire development pattern, creates this common green, this is actually very similar in pattern to Art's Park, the way things fronted down the path of the Asian Way Arena District. And it's also similar to the pattern if you squish this all together and put a lot of parking decks in there to grant you yard, from the scale and size. So, you know, again, a lot of common themes around Columbus you could look at, development types, say, hey, I know what that looks like. So the intention here is mixed abuses, first floor being retail, some retail. Retail becomes an amenity, not the driver. But also a lot of flexible community services, professional office spaces, dentists, lawyers, doctors, things that place people that want to be in this more vibrant environment. What's anchoring this whole development on this corner, down the Broad, is the vision for a transit center. So one of the things that Code is looking at, both as part of Insight 2050 and beyond, is how are we just going to continue to connect the region? That's their mission, that's their purpose. And especially along these major corridors. So Insight 2050 actually within Main Street, but Broad being another key corridor for where we create these connections. Because we have now this slate to work with, this corner becomes pretty special. And this whole area, the potential that we can integrate a real transit center there and use that as also a driver to create vitality and bring people to and from the site, to and from jobs, to and from their living situation, it's really positive. And so I hope what you're starting to see now is all those things that we did to set the stage all start to fall in place now with some of the recommendations that you see in some of these areas. The next one was what we call the Innovation District. So this was a little farther north and up near DSCC. So development goals here, expand and modernize White Hall's industrial base, increase commercial amenities and services for nearby workers, attract the income-generating businesses. So this one's a little bit different, I think it's a little bit farther down the road, understanding that you have an existing condition in there today. But the reality is, if, when over time this area transitions, what would you like to see there? So the committee felt that this was an area that should be targeted for additional income-generating uses. So building on what's already up there from the land use pattern, allowing for more flex office, mixed use, some industrial, really, more jobs in this particular area. Man, Hamilton was another focus area we looked at. So this area is... So this area is, you know, it's the quintessential overall retail quadrant, right? You see these all over Columbus, a lot of big boxes, aging, occupancy, um, coming and going. And so how do we deal with these types of spaces? Well, the best way we could deal with these types of spaces is diversify that kind of one. And allow the market to respond in many different ways, all along the way, trying to do the new development pattern in a way that really promotes and maintains a high level of character. So it's not just anywhere USA anymore. Um, in addition to the retail conversation, there's also the autonomous vehicle conversation that's be, that's happening, whether you're a believer or not. The reality is, you know, 20 years from now, we're going to have a different conversation because that technology is evolving. And what we see there today from a parking situation may not be there before. So you actually see, um, the way this, this lays out, as we, we actually do park these, we do design them from a conceptual standpoint, but they actually work. Um, you see less parking there, you also see the street becoming much more important, you see green space becoming much more important, and the green space actually being something to leverage to create value. Um, so it's not that we're just forgetting about that space and it could be developable, it could be more jobs. There's actually a high level of value to creating that space, um, as part of the development. And then reorganizing everything that kind of fronts Hamilton, so that pattern's not too dissimilar to Hamilton when they had it, that started to happen, that pattern basically from the bridge up to Clark Hall as those things started to transition. So that's, this is the vision for this particular focus area. While we go to a finer grain here in a sharper, sharper pen, it doesn't mean that at the end of the day we think this is going to be built like this. This is still very much our vision and the concept, but it does set the tone for what you think the character should be. One of the other really cool pieces of this plan, um, that we spent quite a, quite a good amount of time doing, is really studying, what does this all mean for you? It's one thing to put a box on a map and a color on a map. We took the extra step with our part, team partner, Ice Miller, uh, to actually look at where's the return on investment? So we actually ran a model, it was the model that was used for Jobs Ohio, when KSI did his return on investment calculator for a lot of the work they were doing. Similar model to look at each one of these focus areas and say, what does that mean for you? Both in terms of employment, labor income, value added, and the output. So this is a summary table of which you'll find in the document in much more detail. Um, but the good news is, as we look at each one of these, there is a, there's a value proposition here for why you should do this. It's not just because you want to redevelop something and you want to put it in the transit center or sometimes be multifamily. It makes economic sense. And so that was an important piece of this document, which you don't find in a lot of comprehensive plans, that goes this extra step. Um, and I think it makes it more informed and more defensible for you elected officials to make those decisions when they get presented in front of you. The last piece of this is implementation, and so I have just two slides on this and I'll be done, a little over three minutes, sorry. Um, so we talked about the goals, objectives and actions, and we showed you the high level of the future land use map and the focus areas, uh, but there's a lot more detail in here. There's roughly 100 different recommendations in the document that support each goal. So this one, just as a snapshot of what goal one looks like, with each goal, there's a series of objectives, there's actions, and then there's a timeframe of when you would like to get those things achieved. And then ultimately, who's the logical responsible party? So this becomes your, um, this becomes your measuring stick for how you're doing, they should check back on and measure your success from. Um, becomes the playbook, in simple terms. So that's a big part of the document, that's the last chapter. And there's a lot more detail in there, but I don't think any of you want to go through every specific action, that's not the intent. The intent is to, to prime you on what you have. And so now, the cool part is, you can go online, we encourage anybody who's listening on TV here, um, today to go online, look at the document, it's on the city, it's on the whitehallworks.com website, and you'll find a full plan on there, and then you'll also find that there's an opportunity for you to provide additional comment. So whether that's folks in the audience, elected officials, the planning officials, community at large, the comment period is open, and we're still looking for, for feedback from everybody. So while we're, you know, we're near, let's say, mile 20, 26, uh, we haven't finished the race, and so there's still time to amend and tweak as needed, uh, during this last period. And the next step ultimately is to bring this back through, through adoption. This really was the, the update and to encourage everybody here and, and on the TV to go online, look at the document, um, and give us your thoughts in, 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 on, in the online, in the comment process. So, how did we do on time? Four minutes?
It depends on how you look at it.
Thirty-five minutes. I was told, I was told 30 to 40 minutes, so I'm going to take 35. Um, we'll, we'll take questions since we're here, unless I have a vote, answer your questions. We're actually going to leave these boards here for a week or so, so people can look at in the City Hall. Um, but do you have any questions for us about what we did, how we did it, or what you have?
I just wish I could be here when, uh, this all rolls out.
Yeah.
For 2050.
Yeah, it'll be 90 and I don't think I'm going to make it that long, so.
That's because you're young.
Well, I, I personally, my, I like the fact that, um, a, a lot of the focus was on millennials and older people, the boomers, whatever you want to call them. Because those are the, those are the two biggest parts, the two biggest sections of the population. Um, and, you know, we need to be attracting more, we have a lot of, uh, boomers that are already in Whitehall. I, and I think one of the things that we need to make sure that we do is that we do provide, um, housing opportunities for them that meets their needs more so than what we already have, which is basically, you know, residential units where people have to take care of this and have to take care of that. Um, and we also need, um, I don't care what anybody says online about this, but we need to attract with the proper, the type of housing that young people are looking for. And that's not something that we have in Whitehall. Um, and, uh, I know I'm probably cutting my own throat here because everybody's going to be, uh, yapping about this, uh, later on, but I don't want people to misunderstand what I'm saying, the world is changing. And we, if we're going to try to be part of the future, then we're going to have to make our city, in the future, what people want, which I don't, you know, uh, I've lived here almost all my life and I love this place. I even built a brand new house and people said, why did you do that? I said, well, because I like living here, I like the convenience of it. And, you know, so this place, Whitehall, has a lot to offer people, especially those who want to be here. And I think by going towards the younger people and the older people, and not to leave the people in the middle out, I'm not saying that, but those are the two biggest parts of the population that we have. And we need to make sure that our city, uh, meets their needs as much as possible, and that's what will make our city, uh, prosperous and successful in the future. And I think this is, uh, this goes a long ways, uh, towards doing that.
Interestingly enough, those two demographics actually want the same thing.
Yes.
Mr. President, um, I thought it was a very comprehensive, um, presentation. It's always good to see, um, everything you have and then what you can do with what you have. A lot of times we see, um, we just take it, well, let's, let's make a change here, let's make a change here, and, and to look at it in a, um, a, a comprehensive form and, and futuristically to think about what we want to do to attract good talent, uh, good people, and to provide just the, the type of walkable communities that I see on West Lane, uh, in the short north, um, and also just a lot of the communities that I've, I've driven through, just to see what they have. We have a lot that we can do here in Whitehall, like the way some of the houses were framed before were to meet the needs of the military and that, and that's really kind, that was then, but this is now, and we need to move in a direction that serves, um, services of the, the community, also maintains what we want to continue to keep it as a, a community, a small town feel and just more walkable. And I think that, that just to see everything the way it was presented and just to give us some more ideas of how we can just mix use a lot of the areas that we have now is just a good visual for, for me to see. So thank you very much for all that, and thank you for those that participated, um, in, uh, just helping come to, to, uh, just the point you did where you're able to present this information to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Was that statistic, 87 percent, 87% of people without children?
Of the million people, of the million people that are projected to come.
That is surprising to me.
Of that growth in our, MSA.
And, and part of that is, again, the, the boomers, the, 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 the older, uh, folks, and then also, you know, millennials and young professionals are also having kids later, uh, in life, so that's why that 87.
Less children.
Excuse me, what, what are the other things, um, how you address the seniors? There are a lot of people that don't want to leave their homes, but they need, um, s- some, some way of maintaining their home and other people, like the walkable areas, the, the health services, the healthcare services. I think all that needs to be incorporated in a new community so that people aren't uprooted from their homes that they love so much and want to stay in the, in the community where they, where they were raised, because I think it's real unfortunate when seniors get to be, uh, a certain age, seasoned citizens get to be a certain age, and then they're uprooted out of their community, and they don't know anybody where they are, you know? So to stay where you are and then, uh, build a framework around it, I think that's, that's where, you know, the direction that we need to, to look at in incorporating and making sure everybody has a room, uh, here and a place here.
If you look at, like the Woodcliff, uh, focus area, for example, Man and Hamilton, the way those are envisioned is they're very integrated, right? So you can have those services within those development patterns and have the, the living situation with them, so they coexist in the same space. Versus you have to travel to that big box center or, you know, someplace else to get those services, it really should be integrated. I'd like to say that, um, you do a lot of work around Central Island Midwest, and a lot of, a lot of work with your neighbors. And I've seen this community actually be on what I would call more of a sprint in the last 10 years to really move, move this city forward, and that's been impressive. So it was a pleasure to come work with them, uh, because I, before we even started this project, we saw all the good things that were happening here, and that's what makes for a fun project. You know, good leadership, you have good staff, and there's momentum happening, good things happen. You know, it's, it's, as, it's not very rewarding for us to go into someplace where everybody's kind of agreeing on it, you know, that's what happens, of course, I, I realize, but we're moving forward, there's a vision, there's momentum, and there's, there's an energy here. And so that, that was one of the parts, so we, we appreciate that. Um, and I think that you probably will see this stuff sooner than you think. If you just look around, you know, within 10 miles of you, there's places that you thought, crap, I didn't know that was happening, and what did that? So, you know, the opportunities here, what this document does that's critically important is that it sets a clear expectation for the private sector of what you're willing to receive. That's really important. Because time is money, they don't want to go through a process to get to the end and have everybody disagreeing on what's your capital. So this is really, it's a laser-like focus, and is a communication tool for Zach and Joe and others, say, hey, this is what we want, this is what we're open for business for. And so it makes, it provides a certain level of expectation and security for them when they come to you. So that's important.
I, I think it's important to, to realize that this is a flexible, a plan, I, I believe, because what we're doing is really keeping an eye on trends, uh, for the future. And I, I know that, you know, eventually baby boomers, my age group, well, we're going to phase out, you know, and there's going to be another group to come in there to take our place, and, and the same with millennials and all of that. So, uh, it's not like we're trying to focus on only baby boomers and millennials at this point, but those are the two biggest groups, and we're not trying to leave any other group out. But we believe that Whitehall is flexible and, and, and still large enough to accommodate everyone, and, and we feel like this plan can do that.
So go online, download the document, open the, open up Sunday morning with your coffee, and have some soft music, and some time with it. Um, and, and encourage other people to do the same, because the only way we can get in this last six miles in a meaningful way is if people give us the feedback. So let's just close it with that, unless you have any other questions.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, well, we will move on, and, uh, first opportunity for poll public, if anyone would like to come forward, you have up to three minutes. All righty, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Baker.
Hey, Mr. President, Administration and Financial Management, last, last Tuesday, we discussed and will introduce four items of legislation tonight. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday, the 26th, at about 3:31 PM.
All right, thank you, sir. Community and Elder, Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Almar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week, we have no pending legislation, uh, we will meet again next week in the back, 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last week, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Hatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, and we have one piece of legislation reading by title only tonight, and we will meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Hatt.
Thank you, President Graham. Public Safety met last week, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again in the back sometime after 6:30 on Tuesday.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, 6:30 in the back.
All right, we've completed our standing committee reports, we'll move on now with our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Mack.
I'd like to say welcome to all who came out tonight to listen to our OHM, uh, report and, uh, development plan, uh, for the future, for the next 20 years, thank you so much. Um, I would also like to, uh, remind everyone that, um, we are working hard on the YMCA. I will be meeting with the park director, uh, next week in order to discuss cost containment and, uh, but never fear, we will get through this. And, uh, we are still on time for opening in the fall. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, next we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bittles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you everyone for coming out this evening. Uh, just save the date, uh, that I would like to let all members of council as well as the public know, uh, May the 23rd, uh, the Legal Rams will be, uh, doing their final examination here in City Hall, that is a Thursday. Uh, they are currently working on a mock trial, uh, that is dealing with a very, uh, very touchy, uh, very relevant subject as it relates to bullying, um, and a wrongful death action that resulted from bullying. So they are really going full bore on it. Uh, my office is working on incentivizing, uh, this year where there will be a clear winner, so that the public knows, you're invited to come out to actually participate and be on the jury, uh, for this particular trial, but we're working on it actually being incentivized where there will be a clear definite winner, uh, to put a little edge and a little competition on it. Um, next, I would like to congratulate the mayor, uh, just publicly for what a, for a wonderful state of the city, um, address, that was just fantastic. I think they just get better every year, and I know that you didn't do it all by yourself, but I'm congratulating you because you're the closest to me. Um, and on behalf of myself and my wife, uh, we are, would like to express our thank you to all parties that were involved in that special recognition, uh, we're humbled by that, so I would just like to, uh, just say a special thank you to you, Mayor, and everyone that was involved in that recognition. that was involved in that recognition.
What time is your rant? Seven o'clock?
I think we're going to do it at six.
Seven, six, okay.
But there will be flyers that will be posted, just...
I always look forward to that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight, I've been waiting for you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report, I did want to let everybody know that we had a pre-construction meeting for our 2019 road maintenance project, and just as a reminder, we're going to be doing new pavement on the last block of West Wall, on Fairway Oaks in that neighborhood, we'll be doing new curb and gutter, new pavement on Collingwood from Maine to Etna, and we will also be doing new pavement on Shady Lane and Brentwood Court, so those are the streets that we are focusing on this year. In addition to that, we had a pre-con meeting for a waterline replacement project on Erickson, and we are getting ready to, we just opened up bids, and we'll award bids for the Yearling Road project, but all told, on infrastructure this year, the city will be spending about $3.2 million on infrastructure projects this year. It's certainly not everything we'd want to get done in one year, but certainly a significant investment in our infrastructure worth like $3 million, so I just wanted to give you all an update on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting, we have the Treasurer's Investment Report for January 2019, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for January 2019, the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for January 2019. We've also received the Auditor's Expense Report for February 2019, as well as the Auditor's Bank Report for February 2019, and we have also received from the auditor the Statement of Cash Position for February 2019, along with the Auditor's Revenue Report for February 2019. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have received the minutes for the March 7, 2019, meeting of the Planning Commission, we have also received minutes from the February 13, 2019, meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we received the agenda for the March 6, 2000, meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Those are all the Communications, Petitions, and Claims. Ms. Al, I gave you fair warning that at this point I would be calling on you to check, call roll, whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck? Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we will begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening, as usual, we will begin with the third readings, we start off with Ordinance 23, 2019, it's approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $442,882.50 from various accounts in the Wim Pity Fund to the Debt Service Fund.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 23, 2019, move to adopt.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 23, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 23, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance, 27, 2019, authorizing the transfer of certain property located on Hamilton Road South and Broad, South, on Hamilton Road, comma, south of Broad Street to the Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 27, 2019, and move for its amendment as submitted.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for, to amend Ordinance 27, 2019 as submitted. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 27, 2019 has been amended as submitted.
Excuse me, Mr. President, as it relates to Resolution 9 and 10, I would like to make a point of order before you read those into the record, so you can move on.
What's your point of order?
Oh, you were about to move to...
Yes, okay, so I'd like to move...
For 27.
All right, at this point, I'd like to move to adopt 27, 2019.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 27, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 27, 2019 has been adopted. Now, let me make sure, at this point, you want to make a comment?
At this point, Mr. President. As it relates to Resolution 9 and 10, on both resolutions, there is declaring an emergency clause at the end, I would just ask that both of those emergency clauses be amended. This is the third reading, and by charter, these are for parcels of property, so they have gone technically through three readings, so we're okay there, but as far as declaring the emergency, that's when the actual statute or the resolution will go into effect, and that's not necessary for these resolutions.
Gotcha.
So, you got it?
So you're going to amend...
Taking off the...
You're going to amend, striking the...
Emergency clause.
Declaring an emergency.
On 9 and 10.
The words "and" declaring an emergency, okay? All right, so...
As a matter of clarification.
Yes, right now.
Right now, right now?
Right now.
What he said.
You've got to read it first.
You guys love to mess with me, don't they?
Hang on now.
You guys get in the city every time.
I have Resolution 9, 2019, before us at this time, it's authorizing the mayor to accept title to parcel number 09000467 from the Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation located within the city of Whitehall, and pay all fees associated with the transfer of property and declaring an emergency. Go. I want to amend...
Mr. President, I'd like to amend Resolution 9, 2019, to remove the declaration, emergency declaration.
Second. We'll get that too, real quick.
All right, I do have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor to strike and declaring an emergency from Resolution 9, 2018, question, 2019. Questions or comments?
Mr. President, just a matter of clarification, again, the motion was to strike all references to the emergency clause.
Correct.
Just for clarification.
Okay.
On Resolution 9?
Correct.
I think you did.
All right. Please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 9, 2019 has been amended, striking all references to declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to, motion to adopt Resolution 9, 2019, as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Resolution 9, 2019, as amended. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 9, 2019 has been adopted as amended. Our next resolution is 10, 2019, it's authorizing the mayor to accept title to parcel number 09000468 from the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation located within the city of Whitehall, and pay all fees associated with the treasurer, transfer, I'm sorry, of property and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 10, 2019, and amend it to strike anything related to emergency resolution or whatever.
Declaring an emergency.
Second.
So I do have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor to amend Resolution 10, 2019, striking all references to and declaring an emergency or declaring an emergency. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 10, 2019 has been amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to introduce Resolution 10, 2019, and move for its adoption as amended.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Resolution 10, 2019, as amended. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 10, 2019 has been adopted as amended. That's all the items we have under third reading. Under second reading, we start with Ordinance 29, 2019, authorizing the creation of the Etna Road Municipal Public Improvement and Setting the Expense Account and appropriating $41,962.28 from unappropriated monies in the Wim Pity Fund and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next up, we have Ordinance 32, 2019, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(21) to allow Two Tones Brewing Company to operate a wholesale business on the property located at 4359 East Broad Street, property owned by Jacob and Fay Gellman. That ordinance is being read by title only. We will also have a public hearing on that ordinance on April 2nd, 2019. Next up, we have Ordinance 33, 2019, it's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.03(c)(1) to allow Whitehall City Schools to operate school facilities on the property located at 4040 Landy Lane, property owned by Board of Education of the Whitehall City School District. That is being read by title only, it's also scheduled for a public hearing on April 2nd, 2019. So last item of legislation we have under second readings, under first reading, we start off with Ordinance 34, 2019, it's advancing $11,250 from unappropriated monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Bulletproof Vest Grant Fund, making a fund transfer of $11,250 from unappropriated monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Bulletproof Vest Grant Fund, making an appropriation of $22,500 from the Bulletproof Vest Grants Fund to the Bulletproof Vests Grants Account and declaring an emergency, and I believe that this whole thing has to do with bulletproof vests, so...
Mr. President, would you like to read that one more time?
No, I do not want to read it again.
In that case, I will introduce Ordinance 34, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 34, 2019, the Bulletproof Vest Ordinance. Questions or comments? Did you suspend the rules? I mean, did you ask for...
We haven't voted, but I asked.
Okay. That's why I said questions or comments, okay. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 34, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance 34, 2019. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 34, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 35, 2019, it is appropriating $2,782,784.15 from various unappropriated monies in the OPWC Issue II Fund to various accounts within the OPWC Issue II Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 35, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 35, 2019. Questions or comments?
It was eighteen cents, I think it said fifteen. It's eighteen cents.
Mine says fifteen.
Mine says fifteen.
Mine says eighteen.
Did you say eighteen? Fifteen.
Should be fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, fifteen is correct, then, that's what we're going with. If not, I'll throw the three cents in if you need it. All right, so I do have a motion to suspend the rules. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 35, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of Ordinance 35, 2019. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Ordinance 35, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance, 36, 2019, making a fund transfer in the amount of $432,585.14 from unappropriated monies in the General Fund to the Economic Development Incentive Planning Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 36, 2019, move for suspension of rules.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 36, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 36, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 36, 2019.
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 36, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance 36, 2019. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 36, 2019. Being read by title only. Next up, our next ordinance is 38, 2019. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow the Mad Greek to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facilities on the property located at 4210 East Broad Street, property owned by Plaza International Properties LLC. And you might want to check the actual ordinance to make sure that we have international spelled right. I got inventory or something, I don't know. There's an extra letter in somewhere.
A. A? Good day. A.
All right, that's being read by title only. It's also scheduled for a public hearing. It's been referred to the public, to, to the Planning Commission for their April 4 meeting, and we will also have a public hearing on it on, at the April 16 meeting. Our next ordinance is 39, 2019. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between ABM Building Services LLC and the city of Whitehall for the purpose of providing design, build, facility renovation services and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. We will also be having a public hearing on that on April 2, 2019. Next up, we have Resolution 15, 2019. It's authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept a bulletproof vest partnership grant and declaring an emergency.
They are. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 15, 2019, and move the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 15, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Resolution 15, 2019 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. Anyone who would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. All right, we'll move on to community date board. Open for anybody here. Be stuffing Easter eggs here in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. Thursday, April 11, the Bertha Ice Bowl Cafeteria, 3:30.
Laughy-taffy for everyone.
Don't break for you. Isn't the Easter egg, is it? Is the Easter egg on, on April 13? It is. They also have planting of 600 cherry trees in Whitehall Community Park at 6, or at 9:00 AM. Yes. Which will be older kids doing this and residents that cannot spend the two minutes picking up Easter eggs. Oh, I say we just send them all over afterwards. Yay. Couple hundred of them, just send them on over.
Dig the holes that way, just tell them there's Easter eggs out there.
That's right. See you tonight.
All right, who else has something for community date board this evening? We'll move on to poll council. We'll begin with Ms. Coniston.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming, and don't forget to go on that whitehallworks.com and help, help us decide the future of Whitehall. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Kanter?
I'm gonna say the same thing to Councilperson Coniston, say thank you much for coming and watching. Glad to have the school builder here. It was really nice for OHM to come in here and do their presentation, so like Karen said, get on the Water Works, whitehallworks.com and check it out for everybody that's watching. And just to let you know, you know, a lot of us are under the weather up here, so it's tough sitting up here, so I apologize for coughing, but that's it.
All right, goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the new faces and in the audience, thank you for everybody that's watching from home. Just repeat what they said, I'm excited to go look at the more comprehensive plan and hopefully you guys will too, and give us your input. That's all.
Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also like to thank everyone for coming, and Joe, Zach, great job on this presentation and everybody that participated, it was very interesting and informative. I will thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind everyone to keep Coach Gray and the Gray family and your thoughts and prayers, and just like to share quickly with you what he meant to me, but when we, when I was in high school, I competed in track, I did a field event, and I was really too small for not only the equipment, but the, what you had to do. I kind of felt like I had the skill, and he noticed that I was struggling with becoming a part of that, and I was just a freshman. The first thing he told me was be around it, so I joined the team as like a equipment person to go to all the senior meets. By my junior year, I was very competitive in that event, and what he told me was, you might be considered that you're too small to do this, so you need to do a couple of